Hearing to order. And I would state, I guess anyway, that Aaron and Mike Mishu are planning to change, I guess it's a open business, to a conditional use business. And that being said, is there anybody who has anything to say? Go ahead, Ed.
Sorry, guys. Hi, I'm Ed Walsh. I'm actually their next go neighbor. They were already there when we moved in. He started up his business and I just wanted to say it's a good idea. I'm glad he's coming and changing it to a conditional use. They've been great neighbors. The business has been there four years or so. When I was a fire chief in town, I actually did inspection over there. At that time, he was running a good shop. I just want to speak in favor of it, that's all.
Anyone else? All right, that being said, I'll close the public hearing. And we're about to open the regular Plating Board meeting. So if you take a minute, read the minutes, and we'll go from there. Once we get to the minutes, Mike and Aaron will take care of our discussion as far as your situation. Hope to have some kind of an answer for you before we get done here tonight. Is there a second motion? Are there any questions, comments? All there? Two, three, four, five, oh, thank you. Yeah. The last part? I think what we'll do is jump around a little bit. We'll come back to that next part of the agenda, Form 226. And I think beforehand, when we take care of the site, we'll condition use permit, the application that we just had a public hearing for. So any comments, questions from anybody here on the board? One question I have, and I thought about today, I think, was, we talked about the potential for 175 boats. And I guess the question I thought of was, what about this summer? Do you guys store the trailers for people?
There are some. I would say probably a half a dozen. I'm trying to discourage it, because no matter where I put it, I have to move it a few more times. So I really don't want... But I think a half a dozen, just don't have a piece of property, but I can even keep it, so I'm just, out of the kindness of my heart, yeah.
True.
Other than that, no, not opening storage trailers by any means.
Ken, I guess a question to you is, is the property totally commercial?
I'd have to take a look. I think there's a split zone in there.
I couldn't tell for sure when I was looking.
I'd say if I was transitioned, commercial A and rural as well, I thought there were three zones in there.
It seemed like commercial A, but I wasn't sure where the property line was. And give the potential of it being something other than, is that an issue, as far as changing this to a conditional use?
No. That was approved, you know, so that was the first thing we looked at.
Okay, that's fine. My question to answer then?
We've had numerous people that were contacted, called to inquire what was going on, and all of them were positive. We did have one letter written by Wensworth Farms, which was all positive as well, too. And I think the only concern we had, we discussed during the site work, was the entrance. And GFT does have a proposal to expand that when they do their roadwork. I just had that as a condition, that it's done within two years. So in case the state doesn't fix the road, the applicant would have to expand that. And in the meantime, I would just put a delineator or some kind of marker on the edge, especially on this side here, it just seems like it drops off quick, as far as people pulling in the trailers. Which, do you do most of them yourself? Or do people just bring them?
No, like I'm...
So that would be my real concern, is that... You haven't had anybody stuck in the ditch yet?
No, but I tell them to take it why.
Anybody else?
Ken, did you and Mike have any conversation about people pertaining to materials like battery disposal, fuel disposal, oil handling?
Most of them, he's got existing contracts with a lot of them. And this was a big thing we used to deal with quite a bit, the batteries and stuff like that. But now there's a core charge on it, so there's money to get the batteries off your property. And if you don't turn one in when you buy one, then there's additional fees to it. So that's really becoming less and less of an issue nowadays because of the core charges. We could get, we have talked about it, and who is taking your antifreeze?
We don't generate antifreeze, but the waste of oil with Jim Frage and Industrial Burner Services, they recycle and burn it, waste oil furnaces. And that's at the end of the season. Figure what changes. For over the seasons, really nothing.
Could we just get some kind of paperwork confirming that that's a practice that's in place?
How much do you use a store there before?
We use five gallon buckets. You know, we buy them and we fill the bucket, you know, bucket up. And then Jimmy picks it up, or most of the years picking up, I could drop it off, but he usually just comes around and takes it, you know, like I do.
Yeah, yeah, that's what you're saying.
It's invaluable commodity now.
Anyone else? All right, next up, who wants to give us a little review?
Somebody make a motion? If the board feels comfortable with it. The big thing is the use really isn't changing from what it is. Mishu has been, I think this is the fourth trip to the Plating Board. The last couple of times, the Plating Board's a home occupation, home occupation, and just that in a way, he just keeps growing. So he just wants to be legitimate and have a conditional use on his wall and frame it up.
Is there a motion out there?
I have a question about when you wash the boats. I was just wondering if there was a certain area of your, you know, you wash them on the asphalt that you...
You threw a area from the...
And then does the water flow to a certain spot? Do you have any sort of attachment there?
Exactly, off to the side, I've got, you know, inch and a half crushed rock that goes into, because it didn't want all of my lawn. But it's all biodegradable soaps and whatnot, again, because my lawns are so close, I'm not going to poison my own well, you know.
So you don't really have too much problem with extra water from that?
Oh, not as making erosion or runoff or any sorts, no, not at all. It doesn't happen that often. I would say, you know, if there's 50 boats there, maybe three would get washed. They just don't want to pay for that, number one, because they're really washing themselves. So it happens, but it's not... It's 5% of the time, maybe.
Anyone else?
I was just looking at, pacing around there. And in the back there, you plan to finish the parking lots or...
Yeah, exactly.
Been a certain amount of time, should we...
Yeah, as soon as the boats are gone, we'll just start to finish that off.
So you're thinking you'll probably do that this summer?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And so you'll be able to revegetate the edges of it or something like that? You'll be done grading it out this year?
Exactly. I would say, I'm hoping by August, because by September, they start rolling back through later days. So by September, you gotta get it done by then. And what I'm just hoping is we will spread them all out, so you can see how close they were. Just have a little walking run coming in.
All right, so then let's go through the standards. A, the use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitats. The use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies. The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance, and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with the performance standards of this ordinance. Again, I'd say yes, we dealt with the traffic department, we have a condition dealing with the situation that the state doesn't take care of.
I mean, some sort of signage there.
Yes. E, the site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations. Adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made. Say that was a yes?
It's a condition. I don't want to say some condition that Kenny and Mike trace a paper with that.
So we're now at G. Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. Should be a yes.
Similar condition.
With same or with condition. The stormwater drainage system capable of handling a 25-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed. Any comments?
Just the concern that Gavin had, I guess, would be maybe a condition that Kenny would touch base with Mike in the, before the winter, to see if that little drainage issue toward the west end of the log, is that one of these, Mike? Has been addressed.
We're at I. Adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation has been made. You agree with this, yes?
Yeah, I'd like to see a little bit of revevegetation around the edge of the parking lots, something to hold the soil in place. And when we're down there, we did talk a little bit about the visual, being of the seagull boats from 109, and just allowing the trees to grow.
Right, with air.
Yeah.
J, there is adequate water supply to meet the demands of proposed use and for fire protection purposes. Again, water is not an issue for you, and Ed's already spoken about the time that the fire department's been there. So again, I agree with you.
No.
And you have, is there no electricity in the back of it?
Right.
Right, right.
K, the provisions for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protections in neighboring properties for detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, oil, and the like. And L, all performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met. And M, archaeological and historic resources as designed, as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected. Okay. So it looks like we have a couple of relatively minor conditions that we're going to have. Now I think maybe it's time to see if we can get a motion up on board. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, are there comments on the motion? Now...
That's with condition.
With conditions, maybe at this point in these comments, we should make sure that Brenda has the conditions listed. Okay? So we were at... D was where we were concerned about the drop-off on the edge of the road, culvert, and the state is coming in to redo the road, but in case they don't, we need to put a condition on, and perhaps we need to have a date, what do you think, everybody? Well...
We can handle it. These projects starts next year, I talked to them, next summer they're supposed to do the road. So I mean, it should be done by the end of next year, if that helps.
Yeah, I guess we were concerned about what would happen if the state, for whatever reason, gets behind.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's more our concern, I think. We understand that, okay, it's planned, but what if?
Right.
And so we need to come up with something to give Mike and Aaron a chance to have the state take care of it. But then perhaps maybe we need to consider what is going to happen if the state backs out or whichever.
Sure.
What's a reasonable date, anybody?
November 2018.
November 2018, so before the winter of 2018. So that gives them two summers, essentially.
Yeah, because we know it's not going to happen this year.
This is 16, 17, 18, okay, so it gives them basically two, three summers, kind of this summer, but it's not going to happen. Right, okay. So are we in agreement with that date? Okay, so can... The applicants will be...
Spanning the driveway entrance.
Put a bigger culvert, a longer culvert.
You don't really have to put that one in, they'd stand it.
If the state doesn't do it by November of 2018.
Yeah.
Or do we, do we want it done by November of 2018? Or do we say, if the state hasn't done it by November of 2018, then you should need, you know, like, we want it done by November of 2018? Okay, all right.
Well, will they expand it to 24?
Yeah, it's, I would say it's 18, and they can go up to 24 without a big DOT process, which would be terrific, you know? That'd be a nice wide entrance.
Because I remember they agreed to do that for 200.
Yeah. Yeah, I shouldn't, you know, quote me, but it's like that, means it's actually, you're very narrow, even for a residential. He's a bit of a big step to mall, so it's not a non-issue with him, he's just going to change it up.
And in the meantime, do like the markers or something, just to make it more...
Yeah. A delineator, especially on this side of the entrance.
Yeah.
Any thought, any sort of marker of some kind?
Just so they can see if they're not there.
Sure.
All right, the condition, I believe, on...
F and G.
F and G is similar condition, just the paperwork, correct?
Yeah.
So the paperwork showing that the disposal of the waste and the hazardous materials such as the batteries are being handled.
Specifically the oil, yeah. You said you don't really generate any waste gas in the, I mean, any other sort of fluids there?
You know, the oil, change oil, transmission oil, all goes in the same barrel, they think they use as waste. So I can get, what does it mean, like a letter or something, or?
Yeah, I guess it's a...
Who says he picks it up and...
Yeah, a signed letter.
Sure.
And then I think the last one was I, we're looking for to control the soil erosion.
H.
Okay, all right, sorry, let's go back to H.
Yeah, we got H, too, we can go.
All right, let's back up, I'm sorry, let's take care of the order, what's H?
Just looking at his driveway there, and just if that gravity you have isn't sufficient or gets filled up with debris or pine needles and such, that maybe we make a condition that you redo it within, you know, keep, keep the thing maintained so it doesn't get clogged up.
Absolutely.
It's in your benefit, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Or maybe Ken would look at it, too, and, I mean...
Yeah, we looked at it when we first were there, and he had an area that he was going to dig up, put some fresh stone, because the natural driveway came down through there. And basically, it's just water, because everything else is biodegradable, the materials that they're using there, so it wasn't to treat anything, just get the water in the ground. And that would just be washing the boats?
If, yeah, that was it, exactly.
Do you wash the boats before people pick them up?
No, unless they ask, and I just...
Especially people? They wait for their boat?
They don't want to pay. Otherwise, we're better than pisses the white boats.
Okay, I, we were talking about the erosion off of the driveways, is that...
Well, just getting the parking lot in the back, once it's been finally graded this summer, which is fine with you, for it to be, you know, some seeded with grass or something around the outside of it, just to...
I would say like some conservation mix or something to hold it.
Yeah, just so it's not bare, sand there, get something that'll, you know, create more permanent vegetation, because it's a, it's a big parking lot, so you don't, you know, it'd be nice if they had vegetation.
And again, it's in my, you know, possession, it's together, yeah.
Just stabilize the driveway from going anyways, which is in your best interest, so you don't have to fix it.
And like in the back, just, I guess, completion of that project, so that it's, you know, it's not like you're putting dump truck loads back there every year or something.
Right.
It's like, you know, comes to some sort of equilibrium.
And then did I hear at the end, some concern about plating trees that are going to diminish the view from road?
That's probably, yeah, K, I guess, the provision of buffer strips, which... No, just don't cut those ones down.
No, no, we're letting the pines go, and actually want to manage it or something, just, you know, fill out, turn it into a nice little wall. Again, I don't want anybody really getting any ideas, you know, seeing stealing stuff, so.
Absolutely. All right, anyone else?
Is that what you had capped in the application itself, what the number of boats? Is that written down?
I don't know, was it, was it in the conditions anywhere? It was just that we had written down that it's up to 175 boats. Do you have that in the whole?
No, basically the whole mark just says you can't tell driving by that there's business going on, and when the neighbors cut all the trees, that's when it really became visible that there was a business going on, besides the sign up front.
Is that 175 what you're comfortable with?
Yeah, it's solid, you know, let it flush away, sometimes it's a lot less than that, you know, there's sell boats, move away from the lake, but that's the most we've ever had, so...
I guess maybe it would be worthwhile, just in case, you know, the business gets sold, and somebody else comes in, and somebody wants to do whatever, so maybe we should put that... Is that comfortable with you?
I'm comfortable with 200.
To everybody else? Okay, then why don't we do that? Let's do no more than 200 boats. And that way, anything is covered, that you're ever going to have.
Sure.
It's reasonable for anybody else coming in, too. Anything else that anybody picks up on?
What about, like, selling boats? Would you ever sell boats, like, on the...
I personally don't sell boats, but once in a while, there's a customer that wants to sell a boat, I don't even take a commission, I just try to help him move their boat, but other than that, I'd rather not, it's a headache, you know?
Do you want to pile up to a couple of boats for sale? Or do you want to say no, so you can tell the people that?
Well, I guess if you're asking if I'm selling the boats, or is it the same thing? So then I would say, a lot of the four boats of a customer would sell the boat, you know? Because that's all there really is room for.
Sure, sure, that's good.
And then is there any more kind of doing changes in the signage, anything in the signage area out there?
No. No, I think, you know, it comes with better from word of mouth than advertising if you need to. But the marine part, it's established, it's as big as I want it, it's, you know, the rental and sales of kayaks that we'd really like to promote. So yeah, at this point, I can see it.
Anybody else think of anything? You're good with everything, Brenda? Okay, so we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've accepted conditions, all in favor. One, two, three, four, five, okay, it's approved, five oh. Thank you.
No, thank you. And when would you like the evidence, certificates of whatever's being done?
As soon as you get him bringing in, and we'll have you a certificate ready and bring it down.
We'll work on it this week.
Awesome.
Does he know the size that we can get to get the frame?
Yeah, yeah. Now that he passed, he has all these free coupons for onboard rentals.
Okay.
Yes, he might, he might as well, I think he'd do it right.
All right, we're going to go back to Form 226. And I want to, if nothing else, you've had the chance to look at the amendment that I added to the minutes. And it's really nothing more than my, you know, view of what happened over a couple of different selectmen meetings. And the one most recent, Form 226, was the one that took place last, last week. It wasn't two days ago, it was a week and two days ago. And I had just made the comments in there, that we were talking about this discussion about Form 226 taking place amongst the selectmen themselves and the people that were out in front in the audience. And Ted, at that point, had pretty much, you know, his discussion was revolving around the fact that he did not want me to be on the warrant, and for some reasons, that doesn't matter at this stage in the game, I think, but at some point, Ed made a motion, built a second motion, as you can see, and it was pretty interesting that the boat passed 2 to 1. And all of a sudden, it was over, and now, as a warrant is going to go for the time meeting in June, there will be a motion or a warrant question on there that would include taking out A from our ordinance, and a second question that would be there to take out B in our ordinance. So our logic, again, is that... So our, our logic again, as it kind of infers, is we want basically everybody to have a chance to make the decision what's gonna be in, what's not gonna be in, and then go from there. Questions, anywhere, you know, I don't know if it made sense to you with the notes that I put in there, some of you guys were there, so you saw what was going on, others were not, so it's a little, you know, a little fuzzy to you perhaps, but it, it went well, I mean, the county council meeting went very well.
I'd just like to thank Mom and Dad, who was able to...
Okay, that, go ahead.
I was also gonna ask if you've heard of it, that it helped me with the, uh, the meeting.
Public hearing, I was always doing everything that...
The wording that we had, the first public hearing's gonna cover this game as well, so, and that was just...
Many people heard this, so we got... Any other comments about 4226? I wanna say it might be the last time you see that, but I won't say that again, I'm just thinking. And then we go to the next old business, the emergency repair provision, is literally interesting, I'm gonna go to some notes here for this. This also took place at the Board of Selectmen meeting that same night, and the questions, the questions that came up revolved around a hole that was run into literally by a truck and, and left the gaping hole in the front of it. And as I, as I understand it, and again, I did not see that at that point, I have since looked at it, but since then it's been kind of closed in, but as I had heard it, there were, there was a large hole, and the next day, 50, perhaps 50 people went there and attempted to try and close it in, to make it so that the house was, you know, not open to the, to the weather. And there was a concern on what the selectmen's minds about the inability perhaps of getting what he referred to as a, an emergency permits, kind of a thing. Now, he caught me totally off guard when, when this came up, he had asked if I could come up to this, to the podium, and I had no idea really what he was going to talk about, and that's what he kind of was talking about. And I still wasn't sure where we stood at it, I wasn't sure whether we have any control over something like an emergency permit, or whether we have any control over doing anything prior to somebody coming for an application like they would anytime, you know, to, to, to get. So I'm pulling that out because they had asked me to come back to them next week and attempt to try and explain if we can come up with something like that, if we can't because the state says no, which I suspect, or if there's an alternative. So, that being said, any questions, comments? Yeah, we will.
We have a restoration Wednesday, Friday.
So with this particular situation, the town clerk or, or town administrator emailed me by 7:30 in the morning, so I knew the situation was out there, Fire Chief was calling right after, which happened to be a relative, I spoke with him to see if he needed me to come in on Sunday and give him a permit, he said that the adjusters were coming out on Monday, they'll take care of it on Tuesday, it wasn't gonna be a big deal, then I guess everybody showed up to help, and those helpers were also bringing in the permit application. Now we're not dealing with the property owner, we're dealing with somebody else, so the more people that jumped in to help made it more difficult for us. The, the section in the building code that we're currently working with that the state's adopted under emergency repairs is where equipment replacement and repairs must be performed in an emergency situation, the permit application shall be submitted within the next working business day to go to the official. So, in this case, they used the words boarding up to secure the place, which I was fine, we brought it all up and I didn't come in on Sunday to give them a permit if they were building. So as things escalated, they did all the building, did all the electrical and all that by Tuesday, Wednesday, they didn't come right in as quick as they could, but whatever, but, you know, the weather wasn't that big of a deal, so the provisions are already in there. Anytime the office isn't open, as long as the service is up and running, any emails are going straight to my phone, and, and I think that can be taken care of at any, any chance. So even if it was a furnace guy, that they lost it, power or something, work's committed to be done and just apply for it the next day we're open, or online, or from the mail slot or anything like that, so availability's there.
Are, are you privy to any information from, you know, the selectmen? I mean, like I said, I, I got this thing kind of all thrown at me in a public meeting and didn't really quite know what was being thrown at me, because I didn't totally understand it, because I really didn't really know anything about it, other than it had been an accident. So, so were they looking specifically for anything other than what we can provide?
Uh, I don't think the planning board can really provide anything, because it's in the state building code already, and a lot of states will allow towns to change it, which then takes away from the state building code, it's really a town code and every, town's different and stuff, state domain doesn't allow you to change it at all, it is what it is, it has to stay where it is, so there's uniformity from Kittery or Forte, and it's all the same, there aren't no different rules or anything, so, I think the provision's in there, and as long as it's followed, we should be all set.
So I mean, I'm comfortable going back there next week then and making that conversation and, and that's what he's looking for, what he appears to be looking for, although it may change. No, it just may change.
Ken, do we, just, do we have anything in there that, what you're looking at that delineates between over 50% damage to under 50% damage, because I know that's something they mentioned, how this case it wasn't 50% damage, so there wasn't any issues within the, she's close to the road, so there was kind of this question.
And that's what happened with this, as things changed, I can see ahead of time other people just trying to help her, which is great, and that's nice, I refer to her as the nicest lady in act, and if not the nicest resident. As things started to change, now the porch is bigger, they're gonna double the size of the porch, well, this is probably the applicant, you know, and people are trying to help, and they weren't getting any closer to Mann Road, but I was concerned, or Acton Ridge, I was concerned with the Mann Road side, so as things changed, I can see that this is going to court. The insurance company paying for it is going to go after the driver that didn't have insurance, and, I mean, it's gonna be a nightmare and this is going to go to court, which ideally we want our records to show a permit position, inspections were done, not inspections were done, a permit issued. So we're trying to just get caught up on that, and it was just, a lot of it was just everyone trying to help and, you know, persevering, the application came in later in the day, but it was done, but the contractors came in and told us it was all done, ready for inspections before we got the permit application, so, it was just something like that, and it was dope. If it was more than 50%, I don't think they would have been trying to fix it right away. And worst case scenario, I guess, is it's, happens Friday at 4:00 when we close, it gives us Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, Tuesday would be the next business day we're open, so it'd give them three days to put things back together, but I would suppose, but if it was a small, tiny little, it's a little, the, the damage could happen a lot faster and they'll be trying to put it together quicker or something like that, and by the time we went to issue the permit, we could say, whoa, that's more than 50%, we've got a problem. So a lot of it's just communication and us being able to respond with them and can go right out there, so, they didn't need us to come right out that day, and they were all set to just file the application on Tuesday when we opened it. And usually the fire department would call the office or something if there's a situation that, that you think about fixing that or something's happened, so, or it's on Facebook, I'll do it anyway, though.
About to do Mr. Eleven?
No, but it didn't make this way, did it?
Um, do you know off the top of your head what that emergency repair part in our ordinance is, so I could just kind of...
It's in the state building code, and I'll make it appear obvious.
All right, any other questions or comments about that piece of old business? All right, Ken, you're on next.
We did a best possible location last year, and when I looked at the number, pass that around, I thought it was 86, the six was, the eight was a six, it's actually 66, not 88, so we just need to relook at that so the minutes adequately reflect that it's 66, not the 86. And actually, I think it's going to be in the 70s, but, you know, 71, 72, the age and old range will come out a little bit early, but they're getting ready to start construction next month or so, and the contractor was reading the minutes online and was concerned, so...
So we're looking at what here specifically?
The old one is the little tiny thing?
Wait, okay, right.
Right, a little old, and newer one, most of it is all behind a hundred foot, except for the little bump out area, chose the hundred foot line and then encroaches on that. And there's, there's not a lot of road under lock to do, to get it back much further. They actually removed the power lines in that area, put them on the ground so they could get the building back even more, so, and that's the first time, I know I've talked to it with a lot of people about relocating the power lines, but if it chooses, once you're done with C and P, you're a little discouraged, still wanna go forward, but by the time you're done with Metro Cast and Fair Point, the cost is so prohibitive, but these people followed all the way through and got everything buried down, so was able to get the building back, I think it was another 15, 20 feet to allow it to, to, to get back even further. So we're looking to amend the minutes from them from 86 to 66.
Would there be something in the original minutes to indicate that there has want to change in the future, so that somebody looking back at the original minutes would know?
Correct, it's 66, yeah.
Any questions, comments?
So I guess what it would be, it would be to amend the November 5th, 2015 meetings for that property to, from 88 to 68.
Did you go back up there counting?
Yeah, I was up there yesterday.
Yeah.
Skip made the motion, Ejekts just seconded it.
See how that works? Is that a porch, Ken?
It's more of a, the building of it. Front part of the house kind of injects into that area.
Is there a foundation under it, or just is it the rest on the tubes coming?
That one's on P is with the patio underneath it, more for storage, was the intention, it's which left, there was a balance on the 30%, I think about 20% of the balance was still there.
It looks huge. No, it looks like we used it from the picture, but...
Yeah, well, that's because a lot of it's on the back, 17.5% of the 30% they're not using, and 21 on the expansion, the curate. So basically, they're only using half the expansion, which still lose the rest of it, they won't be able to use that much.
How come they couldn't come back and use the rest of the remaining?
It has to be readily, forget the verb adjustment, it has to be there two years before, so if your whole house burns down, if you don't use it in two years, it's gone, that's the same with that, so once they use it, they'll never be able to get the rest of it.
All right, is there a motion to amend the earlier minutes?
I will amend the minutes on, uh, fault notice, this practical location permit, um, map 125 lot, 026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions on the motion, on the table? It's like five minutes.
And that's all I have.
Anybody have anything else? I do not. Your motion and to return. Second, we're done, thanks for doing it.